Departments submit requests by the end of January for the fiscal year 2023 budget. Those requests have been vetted to establish the version we are now calling fiscal year 2023 first pass. You will hear me refer to the FY23 first pass budget frequently today. So this is a look at the remainder of our budget sessions for fiscal year 23 budget. We had our budget retreat December 9th. Today, we are discussing large expenditures in the first pass budget to include personnel, capital projects, and key operating drivers. We will return next month on April 26 to discuss revenues, including any proposed changes to our P schedule. On May 10, we will hear from our education partners regarding their FY23 local requests, as well as any requests from fire districts that wish to adjust their tax rate. We plan on delivering a recommended budget with a budget message on May 19. Please note that this is a Thursday. At the following meeting on June 7, we will hold a public hearing for the budget and move to adoption of fiscal year 23 budget on June 21. So today's agenda is as follows. We'll begin by looking at position requests made by departments. We'll then discuss the annual cost of living adjustment and that calculation. Next, we'll talk through the largest increases in operating and the reasons for those requests. We'll wrap up this agenda with the discussion of the recommended fiscal year 2023 capital projects and information technology requests. We'll also have a few recommendations on the homeowner grants should you wish to continue that. I think you'll see during this personnel discussion that there is a need for additional positions to provide our foundational county services. So through the budget process, departments submit requests for 95 positions. Departments have worked with the county manager's office and the budget departments in submission of those requests to provide justification and support for their asks. Budget department facilitates meetings at the county manager and departments' meetings in their strategic focus areas. And after careful consideration, 71 of these requests remain in the fiscal year 2023 first pass budget today. I'll discuss some of these position requests today at their functional levels. The general government function. The county manager's office requesting an administrative coordinator to support economic development and intergovernmental affairs as these areas continue to broaden in scope and workload. Diversity, Equity, and Inclusion has asked for two inclusion specialists. These positions are needed to provide consultation, facilitation, and training to all county departments on integrating equity, human rights, and policies, processes, work environments, and working with the city and community. Elections has asked for coordinators to deliver training and recruitment of poll workers and ensure underserved communities are reached as necessary. Finance has requested the procurement specialists to increase their capacity to manage the procurement of goods and services while ensuring compliance with contracts. General Services requests an additional project manager to manage the growing number of capital projects due to comprehensive facility assessment and project management of AB Tech and Asheville City Schools capital projects. Human Resources has requested five positions to bolster its ability to manage compensation concerns, human resources, information data, employee engagement, and recruitment. IT has asked for two radio systems analysts to ensure compliance with public safety, state, and federal regulations with respect to inspections and maintenance of tower sites and radio equipment. Legal and Risk requests an additional attorney to manage the legal issues that grow with the size of the county. CAPE has asked for a website administrator, as well as two specialists, one of which would be bilingual, to better engage and communicate with our community, aligning with feedback from our community survey. Strategic Partnerships has requested that grants administrator provide oversight and ensure county compliance with grants. Additional grant monitoring position was requested by the planning department. We've moved that request here in order to serve that need at the enterprise level.
Is that just to provide oversight of grants administered through the strategic partnerships fund?
That is to provide monitoring of grants at an overarching enterprise level, so.
Not just not just.
Just grants going out.
Or there's. A bunch of other grants as well.
Can you clarify that there's two positions? One is clarify the difference between those two positions.
One is more at an administrative level, the other is at monitoring level. So the administrative level will be able to take some action on and address concerns about compliance along with our grants government's committee that started earlier this year. So they'll work along with that grants government's committee to ensure that we're compliant with grant funders' requests and that we're. So and the monitoring will be over some oversight of those grants as well. They are different positions, but we have we're up to about $100 million in grants in the grant fund.
These are really standard positions in terms of grants administration to ensure that all of the things that go into those grants contracts are being adhered to so that no one gets in trouble for not complying or that you would have to return funds. They're pretty standard positions.
About including ARPA funds, but through the ARPA funds additional support. So that's what I'm trying to clarify here. Are you including in that that number what we're doing through ARPA?
Yeah, so we did. So we do have some funding for ARPA that does the contract monitoring and making sure that work is done through ARPA. But beyond ARPA, the county has significant grant funds and we don't have grant administrators today. So to Amanda's point, we do need some assistance to work with not just the compliance monitoring. We give grants from county dollars, but we also give grants and pass through grants. And we bring in grants from other sources. So these positions in my mind are grant managers that grant compliance, making sure the funding is there, making sure we're compliant with all the eligibility rules that goes along with grants. So we had one department, the planning office, ask for a grant officer. And we're moving that from just a department level to have more corporate entity-wide grant administration. So it's more consistent. That's why we're putting in strategic partnerships instead of one in planning and one in strategic partnerships. But we do have two people that we hired through the ARPA funds that are working specifically in ARPA. But we still have other grants, well over 50, 60 million dollars, I would say. Yeah, the county level on grants that we still need to monitor.
Around 50, 60 million.
Yes, I think when he said 100 million.
Yes, 100 million did include ARPA. It's actually a little over, but yes, about 50, 60 million, which continues to grow.
Okay, so you feel that we need these positions regardless of ARPA?
We're also about to see several million dollars of opioid funding come through, which will require some monitoring. Continuing on with general government.
Yeah, I guess maybe you're gonna get to this, but I'm just trying to jive this hand out, this slide.
Please hold on, are you looking at Parker? New position by.
My budget version.
Yeah, I'm in the general government section now.
Okay.
And so we'll be moving to discuss economics.
Okay, sorry, I'll stop reading.
So yeah, yes, on this handout, I am in the general government.
Okay.
So fishing general government. As the number of solar and alternative projects through sustainability is asked for a project manager to manage this increase in volume of work toward our environmental and energy stewardship goals. The tax assessor has asked for two property appraisers, one for residential property and one for commercial property as they have seen a 30% increase in transactions. Were there any more questions about these positions? I'm going to move to human services. Health and Human Services have requested on their social services side four positions and adult protective services evaluator and adult and aging coordinator to coordinate services for our growing aging and homes populations. Housing specialist to determine eligibility for housing and rental assistance programs and administrative board. On the public health side, there are requests for a quality assurance manager, as well as an onsite wastewater specialist and supervisor to manage increasing demand for well and septic permitting. So our next functional area is public safety. 911 operations request four telecommunicators devoted to answering calls to lessen the occurrence of call takers also providing dispatch services. And one quality assurance specialist to review calls and ensure compliance. Emergency services has a request of eight paramedics, the staff and additional ambulance, and an emergency medical services quality assurance officer. One emergency management specialist is needed to focus on disaster planning and exercises. An additional fire marshal will assist in managing increasing workload of fire inspections and response. Three community paramedic positions on the fourth team have been requested to be funded by the general fund as that grant expires. Identification Bureau has asked for two additional technicians to respond to new laws regarding processing of expungements and fingerprinting of law enforcement, as well as increased volume on permits. Justice Services is requesting the general fund provide support for previously grant-funded program coordinators for veterans and adult treatment force. The sheriff's office has requested three detectives and a forensic technician, as well as funding of previously grant-funded debt. Now in the economic and fiscal development function. And beginning there with agriculture and land resources. They've requested additional soil conservationists to provide technical assistance and respond to water quality issues. Permits and inspections have asked for an additional code enforcement officer to assist in management of permit volume. Planning has requested a stormwater technician to ensure compliance and three planners, one for transportation, one for long-range planning, and one for development services as the scope of planning increases with development and implementation of comprehensive planning.
Then we'll work on transportation.
One for transportation, one for long-range planning, and one for development services.
Those did not include the, I think we did a budget amendment for housing-related.
That does not exclude those positions.
Those were already done this year.
Already kind of built into the check.
Yeah, so those positions were funded for six months for this year.
Right.
We'll get full year costs.
Gotcha, okay.
And John, one of those initial seven requests was the grants compliance person. Okay.
Yes, yes, so that position is still amongst the positions, but it's just been moved into strategic. I'm moving to the cultural and recreational function. Library has requested five positions, a branch manager of the North Asheville Library, library specialist, and a part-time cataloger, as well as two safety specialists for PAC Library will begin mid-year.
What are safety specialists?
So they foresee these positions as being able to assist with interactions with the public where they have people who have come to the library, there might be a security issue. And so rather than continue to have law enforcement posted or hire security security contracted services, they want folks who work in the library bring more of a potential social work aspect to those situations where they can alleviate those concerns without engaging with law enforcement. So I think they're 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 working with HR to see what those positions look like now. And those positions would start mid-year, so they would start in June.
They'd be like on call and floating, or would they be a designated branch of PAC? Or just a. And PAC is a site where folks are, it's in Homeward Bound currently providing some degree of referrals on.
We fund the position that Homeward Bound actually hires to help give people access to resources, especially the unhoused right now. And these positions, right now, we have security guards that work there. And we're thinking instead of just having someone sit for security guard, can we elevate that position to be more knowledgeable about the services that we provide and help connect as well with what we pay Homeward Bound to do.
So it's a manager, two safety specialists, and then what were the other two positions?
A library specialist and a part-time catalog. And those positions are named in the new position request by physician handout. Recreation Services has requested an additional park ranger who will provide rotating coverage at our facilities. And we will also convert a temporary labor position to a permanent part-time position. That leads me to a discussion of the cost of living adjustment.
Can I ask one more question before you leave this? Where are we on salary adjustments and all of that? Because that's something that.
We're gonna have some discussion. I'm gonna I'm gonna move through it, move through this and talk about our drivers. Have a little discussion about that as well.
Well, I was thinking of it in relation to whenever we, aren't we looking at across the board of making sure that.
There is a compensation study that HR has been conducting. And I believe the intent is to bring close that compensation study to to the board and have some discussion when it comes.
So yeah, do we expect that?
My goal would be to have that to you next month, in April. And I would want to make sure we have small group discussions on that in April and then have it adopted, if not as part of this budget, hopefully by May or part of this budget conversation. But it's not fully completed yet. We're working right now with the sheriff's office on detention and some other positions that we need to completely do the market study on and have that ready. So those pieces are being finalized.
So could these positions essentially then have to have some changes made to them? Or are you already looking at, okay, that's already been factored in?
Yes.
Okay.
Yes, one of my questions with that, so. Some of the feedback I've heard from staff is that they 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 feel that there's, when they look across the board at these different positions, that some seem to be compensated at a higher rate. So like when we say specialists, like when I look down through here at specialists, I see quite a range in compensation for a position called specialist. So I'm wondering how how is that being looked at? And I guess if you if you're using that term, it would make one think that maybe it's at the same level across the board. But there's definitely quite a difference in compensation.
That depends on duties as well. So we started this conversation around compensation and HR directions here in case she wants to help out. When we started the conversation on countywide classifications, we started looking at job descriptions. So a specialist in the parks department might be different than a specialist in the emergency services because the duties are different. But we started with those duties, then we benchmarked those to other counties and started setting rates on that. So the specialist term is not the same word and the same duties in different departments. So I don't want you to think that EMS specialist is the same specialist that might be doing something in parks or recreation. It's just the title, but we actually classify them according to the duties that they specifically provide. Does that answer your question?
It does.
You know, a question I had, we've been talking about this new.
Study.
Study for a while. When is it going to place?
It can't go in place until you guys adopt it.
Yeah, right, but when will it be to us to adopt?
Yes, we have the initial report. And then we took that report to the department heads. I did not want to bring a report to you that department heads have not seen and really understand. So that's where we are now. And we got feedback from them. We're going back and digging it. We're also working with the sheriff to make sure he can get his needs addressed around detention. As soon as that's completed, staff is working on that and we should have that to you in April. You can adopt it then, or you can adopt it to start July 1. Those are the options that you would have. To Terri's point, when you're looking through the different values, we're also looking at compression. We're looking at compression because some employees have been here for 10 years, 20 years. We want to make sure that we honor those years of service and look at compression. So that's gonna be a heavier lift to do than just bring people to market. Initially, we were just trying to get people to what is the market paying for this position? But if you do that, there are folks that have been here for years that should be paid. And since we don't have a merit or we don't have a method to lead people along the pay range, they're still pretty much at the beginning of the pay. So giving them something to help move them along the path based on experience, that's the conversation we need to have with the board and see if that's a model that you want to do or you just want to bring people to market. So we will bring those options for discussion to the board in April.
I'm not sure I'm catching the distinction between moving to the market, removing to the market. These things I'd like to retroactively recognize, like if it wasn't compensated at where the market was five years ago. How many positions does the county, what's total county staffing positions right now?
I think it's about 16.
1641.
Is that 1641 FTEs or bodies?
It's a, it's regular positions, so yes.
Those would be FTEs.
Okay, yeah, but with part-time people, it's actually more bodies than that.
If you give us a few minutes, we'll try.
I'm gonna try that answer down for you too.
So I do want to follow up on Commissioner Ross's question. So the organization in which I work, I mean, I'm thinking about my own team, they all have a coordinator title. None of them are in the same pay range. So that isn't shocking to me. But as we move forward, I'm assuming that there will be some employee education on how the the pay ranges then are determined based on job descriptions. I've not heard from many folks with that concern at all, but just to alleviate, you know, staff fears that specialist means that it should be a specific pay grade versus job responsibilities. Thanks, Sharon. Here, Inspector, shaking your head. Thank you.
So I know this is the first pass of, you know, kind of discussion. So this would be, if I'm doing the math right, so we've got 1641, this would be a little bit under 6% growth in total staffing. So for any one year, that's obviously a pretty large increase, right? I mean, our population's growing like around 1% per year, so this would be like six times more than kind of relative to sort of the way the community, you know, growth is occurring. So I mean, any kind of high-level thoughts about that? I mean, again, it was the first pass of that discussion, but this would not be sort of a typical like number of expansions for personnel in a budget cycle, right?
It has not been. And if you go back to several years, we have really focused on getting our public safety rate needs to be. Now we're going back to our foundational departments and we have not funded them the way it should have been funded in the past, I would say. So we really need to look at, and the pandemic has really exposed to us the gaps that we have in service that we're not providing. And staff is burnt out. Staff is working hours and hours of overtime regardless of the pandemic. So if we don't give some relief now, I do believe that we can continue to lose staff based on that burnout rate. So it is a heavy lift. It is, you say, 6%. I just know 71 is a lot of employees to be asking for in one year. But I felt compelled that we need to start funding those levels of services that we want to provide if we're gonna do a good job and not burn out staff.
Is it is it possible to, I mean, kind of thinking about these issues, you know, this budget year, but kind of thinking about some of this over like the next few years? I mean, maybe, again, maybe like this is a year where we just need to do a big lift and kind of get things adjusted. But it seems like, I mean, something in this neighborhood certainly would be sustainable over, you know, if this was like normal, if this was like normal. So just, you know, if there's any way to, I guess it's just if we go forward through this process to kind of share information with us about like, here's what's being requested now, here's the thinking about what it might look like over the next couple of years to sort of put it in that context of like, is this, is this, you know, is this doable in the context of what might be requested going forward based on the staff's kind of vision for what the needs are? That'd be helpful.
I've seen that there's only one position in HR for a recruiter. Is that going to be enough to recruit? How many are already in place?
We have two.
So would be three. And that's that's a heavy lift.
It is, and we actually have a recruiter in the sheriff's office as well. So that actually helps us out across your organization.
And I would think going forward, when you mentioned the boys, our past history has finally caught up with us because we've been holding those numbers down. And the thought in the past, they were a lot lower than they should have been. But now that we're getting to this point though, I'd like to question, you know, I see where Brownie's coming from. Hopefully it will level off and it will just be normal. People won't have as many every year, 6%.
Right, and in the past three years, we added maybe 20 or so, so I would imagine it will be less. But to your point, in the past, we use a lot of temporary labor is how we got work done. And since I've been here, I've met people that have worked for the county as a temp employee with no benefits for 20 years, retiring with no benefits, thinking that they would because they've been with the county for some, but we use temporary labor to do the work. And when they do turn over, and now with the pandemic, when I said it exposed a lot of things, we don't have the opportunity to get temporary labor and the work needs to get done. So the full-time staff is there not for it. We need to right-size the organization.
Moving back, we're talking about the cost of living adjustment. Each year, the commissioners grant a salary increase based on the cost of living adjustment calculation to all employees occupying a regular position and grant fund positions for which that funding source allows. During the budget planning process each year, staff will present a COLA calculation to the board, calculations to two-year average annual change in the consumer price index for urban wage earners and clerical workers, which is the CPIW for short. And that's published by the U.S. Bureau of Labor Statistics. That's measured as of the December data release next preceding the date of the presentation. The board will grant COLA adjustment through the budget ordinance. And if the board elects to provide annual COLA, it will be effective on July 1.
Hey. That's a lot of change there.
So here is our COLA calculation where you see the CPIW from this past December, subtracting the CPIW from two years prior and dividing by that CPIW and dividing by two. And that yields a 4.69%.
6.9?
4.69.
4.69, okay.
Or are you thinking it should be 6.?
I just remember I heard it right. And that's, and and that will get updated further between now and the end of the year. That will be the, that will be the.
That's the situation. So we're, yeah, that's the situation we're presenting since we do the past December. So those numbers are, those numbers are set.
And in all likelihood, next year's COLA will probably also be, you know, above average, right? Because like we're experiencing inflation, part of that's getting baked in this year, and that's gonna kind of carry over at least into next year, even if kind of inflation starts to kind of mellow out, like next year will probably be a big number two, right? Exactly.
We would imagine if you're looking at what happened in '22, then compared that to '20, that growth is still there.
Now, when do the boys get this? Is it July 1st? July 1st, July 1st. Not one time, was it April, February? Well, I said, okay, but now she'll.
Y'all made the decision a year ago to switch it to the beginning of the fiscal year. The one thing that we do want to ask you to, we always talk about this adoption of the budget, is if the board is also gonna participate in the COLA. So just putting that y'all to think about. And you actually make a vote yes or no, so I want to put it out there.
So discussing the budget impact of this personnel dropage for the general fund, the additional position requests represent $6.1 million. The state has also increased the required retirement match by the counties for employees' participation in state retirement system. This increases 0.85% of annual salary for non-law enforcement employees and 0.9% of annual salary for law enforcement employees, and it equates to additional $1.4 million. And applying the cost of living adjustment to existing positions is approximately $5.7 million. This amount will increase to some degree as the. This amount will increase to some degree as the currently in-process compensation study will adjust some salaries, and its exact impact is still unidentified. As it stands in this first pass budget, the personnel costs are estimated at thirteen-point-two million dollars. To wrap up the discussion of new position requests, three additional position requests were made by solid waste. These positions would sit in the solid waste enterprise fund, which continues to be self-sustaining. Two of these positions, heavy equipment operator and maintenance technician, are needed to accommodate the increase in volume and materials processed, while the enforcement specialists will ensure compliance with policies and ordinances. Are there any questions regarding personnel? There are newer thoughts regarding personnel. We're going to move to discussion of operating budget increases. Then you'll see a chart showing departments for which operating budgets have requested increases in excess of fifty thousand dollars. We'll discuss fleet services and vehicles in detail shortly, which is on top of this list. Information Technology has an increased operating budget of one-point-six million dollars largely due to deferred maintenance and infrastructure. A substantial amount of this maintenance was put on hold as we responded to the pandemic. We need to right-size our IT needs across the county. General Services will be tending to deferred maintenance at our recreation facilities, managing utility increases, and weather and contract increases for goods and services due to the rising cost of doing business. This adds one million dollars to our FY twenty-three operating budget. The detention center requires maintenance identified through the facility assessment, and we'll see cost escalators in their jail health contract costing five-hundred-and-thirty-three thousand dollars. The sheriff's office is investing in a crime scene investigation of a mobile unit and purchasing additional safety equipment that will increase their budget four-hundred-and-forty-five thousand dollars. The Public Safety Training Center needs to invest in capital equipment to include an air truck and increased equipment maintenance for fire training, increasing their operating by three-hundred-and-seventy-three thousand dollars. Recreation Services has planned playground and facility upgrades at two-hundred-and-eleven thousand dollars. Emergency Services asked to consult for a plan to identify how we can best deploy our ambulances as calls for service increase. This plan wired a net ninety-seven thousand dollars to their operating budget. Human Resources will expand county-wide trainings and provide more employee appreciation events, increasing their budget by seventy-nine thousand. The two percent annual escalation to the early childhood fund will add sixty-eight thousand. The planning department will scale up training and supplies in their department, adding fifty-four thousand dollars. Tax assessment has increased the cost of fifty-two thousand dollars for training, postage, and printing. Additionally, we're estimating four-hundred-and-ninety-five thousand dollars more in fuel costs for the. Any questions about this? Over the last two years, we've focused on public safety vehicles, and we now need to replace our av vehicles in our general government fleet. Our fleet department has evaluated requests and put forward forty-one vehicle requests. Six ambulances are recommended, four of which are replacement vehicles, one is new to service the Skyland District, and additional ambulance will be added to the fleet with that, proof for that truck having been amongst the position requests. An aging EMS supply van will be replaced with an electric van. Five of these vehicle requests are tied to position requests. Outside of the ambulance and sheriff vehicles, nine of the twelve vehicles will be electric vehicles. Twenty-three of these are sheriff vehicles, two of which are electric vehicles, for a total of eleven electric vehicles. These additions represent an increase over last year of one-point-six million dollars. Any questions about vehicles? Education. As we move from departmental increases, we now need to discuss education. Fiscal year eighteen, the board agreed to consider the unrestricted revenue growth rate as a factor in estimating the amount of local current expense to appropriate annually for our school systems. On this graph, you will see the unrestricted revenue growth rate year over year, and if the board had decided to match that. With the annual allocation, you'll see that trend there. What the annual allocation would have been from fiscal year twenty-nineteen to fiscal year twenty-twenty-two. However, when you look at the actual allocation for local current expense, you can see that the board has provided funding that exceeds the growth rate each year. For fiscal year twenty-twenty-three, the unrestricted revenue growth rate is projected at six-point-two-two percent, yielding about ninety-three million dollars in funding if the board decides to provide this. If we allocate local current expense at the growth rate, this will increase that expense by approximately five-point-five million dollars. We have also provided growth rate to AB Tech as well, and while we do not expect their FY twenty-three requests until next month, applying their growth rate would increase their allocation by almost half a million dollars, creating an increase of five-point-nine million dollars for education, bringing the general fund contribution to about one-hundred-point-five million dollars.
Have there, have there been preliminary meetings with this, uh, school, like the county schools to discuss?
It's set in April. They actually bring their request to you in May, so we already shared these numbers with them. They already got six-point-two-two percent.
So, so you've shared these, this information with them, but at that staff level, there haven't been more like detailed conversations yet around?
It's not till April.
They're also, they also have to wait on some state budget estimates. But they are working through those.
One slide, please. So what's the, what's the light blue line? That's the, that's the, if we provided just for this year.
The light blue line is what is the allocation for six-point-two-two percent growth rate this year? Correct, yes. Had you, have you done only the growth rate over the last several years? You would be providing a little under ninety-one dollars this year.
Yeah, the green line represents that we stuck with the restricted growth, but we give a little bit more each year, so on top of that, a little bit more is what I like.
Are there any other questions about the education piece?
You know, I guess the only thing I would, I would say is, I mean, I just, you know, I mean, the schools are always like such a difficult part of this because of the way the state budget cycle syncs up with our budget cycle. Doc has delayed. Maybe that won't be the case this year. I wish we'll, we'll see as things unfold. It's a short session. Maybe they'll get there. You know, maybe, maybe it'll be a little bit clearer sooner than sometimes. The, uh, obviously, all the employers in the community are facing these issues around workforce, right? So the schools are part of that picture too, and I'm just, I'm just kind of wondering if, if it might be, you know, important to just maybe engage a little bit sooner this year, just to kind of, I don't know, I'm just kind of curious to hear what their high-level thinking is around some of, some of.
High level, one of their drivers that they mentioned is that a fifteen-dollar minimum wage being applied by the state to their positions. A fifteen-dollar minimum wage being applied to their positions, many of those positions are locally funded. So they're saying that will be a big driver for them when they make their budget pass. We have had a couple, we've had a couple of teams' meetings with the school systems, but they're just not quite there yet. Give us an idea of where they're, where they're going. Insurance rates have increased, property insurance rates have increased dramatically for them, and then utility increases are also their main drivers that they're looking at.
Based on retirement increase?
Yes, retirement increase as well.
I, I mean, some of the things I've also heard are around, uh, you know, the turnover staff as well, you know, what their, that their turnover rates are higher than they traditionally are. Again, that's seen in a lot of places throughout the economy right now. So, anyway, I guess I'm just, we're in this kind of different moment, it seems like, around the number of issues, just where the economy's working. So to the extent that we can kind of start understanding like what that's, what that means for the, uh, public schools and how we, you know, need to think about that, I mean, I mean, the good, the good thing is that the revenue streams are also up, so they're, you know, we just kind of followed the formula, even that's a pretty big increase. So hopefully some of the increasing costs are handled by the increasing revenues, but, uh, just any way that we can get a sense for what they're thinking or if there's requests that might be different than the kind of typical request that we need to think about every year. Be helpful to, uh, be hearing that as it becomes available and take a share with us. All right.
So in our budget retreat in December, we worked with you to identify budget priorities. Top priorities, you will see at the top of this list. Affordable housing is planned to see the two-point-three-million-dollar contribution, but also sees investments of the full year of three full-time debt debt staff and operating plan dollars to increase that investment by two-hundred-and-twenty-two thousand dollars. Climate and environmental solutions has two dedicated capital projects, electric, electric vehicle infrastructure and solar on schools and and buildings, both of which we'll, we will discuss shortly. And the Department of Sustainability Lab, an additional position, seeing an increased investment of three-point-eight million dollars. Emergency Services has requested a hundred-fifty-thousand dollars in their budget to cultivate an apprentice training program. Early childhood es- education will see the annual two percent escalation. Broadband was the fifth priority and was funded with an allocation from ARPA. As we move to standing commissioner priorities, you see conservation easements, economic development, and education special projects. We have included a request of the original budget amount for homeowner grants at three-hundred-thousand dollars. Bill Arden will share recommendations later if the board wants to continue that program. We've budgeted two million dollars set aside for community reparations. And strategic partnerships have asked for an eleven-thousand-dollar increase to their grant budget to round out the total work budget available. Are there any more questions regarding operating?
Yeah, I have a couple of questions. So with broadband, I know we don't have that in here, look it up with ARPA. Just, can you clarify, in your note at the bottom, it says ARPA funding has been allocated to support these priorities. So you're talking about the previous ARPA funding, right?
Yes.
That's what that noted, okay. And then the, um, there were a couple of other things that were brought up when we had the budget retreat, and I know that they weren't in the top, but I do just wanna ask some questions about this. So I think it was Commissioner Jasmine B. Starr that brought up potential funding, looking at the museums. Is that one of the things he brought up in that, of looking at this general fund?
Yeah, that's an idea that did come up at that retreat, but also has been floated in a range of conversations over the years. Was what it would look like to transition museum funding into being a standard budget allocation, rather than having those local kind of cultural resources or STEM resources go through strategic partnership or ARPA or any given grant cycle each year, just to, looking at sort of how other communities approach funding local institutions like that, um, and, and seeing that that kind of annualized funding is a way to just help stabilize your income and make it more consistent. So I remain very interested in us having that conversation. You know, obviously wanna hear other folks on commission and staff about it.
And I'm supportive of that as well. I think we should definitely look into it. How, how that would work going forward.
Some of this traditionally been funded through the strategic partnership grants, is kind of what?
Going back in longer history, it was funded in a wider range of ways. I think starting in two thousand seventeen, there was an effort to direct those, those entities to apply through strategic partnerships for Isaac Coleman or ARPA, other ba- basically streams of grant funding. And what I have heard from leadership at those organizations and kind of community constituents, it's just that some of the things that are the greatest challenges for them, for instance, space, are just really hard to, budget for and or plan, do planned growth when their public, or their local public funding, at least to sort of always dependent on grant cycles and could go away one year or double, or, you know, there's just such a high degree of variability. So that's kind of what some of the emphasis was. I think also like when you compare, I can't cite to the data, but just when, I think when you look at sort of how some other communities that have really been able to elevate some of those cultural and STEM resources have done so, there is that consistent local funding stream as a, as a piece of the puzzle.
So is that a little bit of work for us to take a look? Because I believe in twenty-seventeen, when the transition happened, it was moving more towards contract for service more than just an allocation in the budget. So if there was a, and all the contracts that we have now that we do with those organizations have been around the service, so we're purchasing of the service is how that has gotten into a budget. So there's no more set aside budget line items anymore. It is truly, if there's a service being provided, then we'll contract with them to do that work. Unless it was a county-owned facility, then we would pay to rent or to maintain the sound facility. But there have not been any other funding sources set aside for an organization unless it was mandatory or it's a service that we're purchasing. That's why there's no funding set aside for the museums or anything like that, because we don't purchase the service.
And do we add?
You can purchase the service, right? I mean, the service, I mean, this, isn't this kind of that's part of how we just talk about it, right? Because their, the service they're providing is the operation of that public facility, right, for the educational benefits of it. I mean, it can be written such that it's a service contract. I mean, it's, right, but it's, I mean, I think we're aware of what they do, right? And it's a question of, does it need long-term funding or not to keep doing that?
So that's what I'm asking. If this is a little bit of work for us to find a way to fund these organizations as a flat amount every year, let, let us go back and look at that, but I don't know if what service we would purchase, it would be free access to kids coming or something like that. But it would have to be a specific service, not just to say that you're already serving our community, so that's your service. It would be a specific contract that we would write for that, so. But if that's the will for us to go back and try to figure out what service we would procure, we can, we can go back on.
We do, like with the Museum of Science, just as an example, like we do a contract for service now, right? Through the strategic partners?
They just want a contract. They have, it's a grant contract. But it's a grant, so it's a grant that y'all have, or the committee has a slide to fund them with, and we just wanna make sure that they're open and they're providing some service, but it's not a true procurement of a service that we would normally have to buy.
So I, I guess I would say, to me, the, um, I'm open to it. I mean, it's with the, you know, the strategic partners is still a pretty new thing, right? I mean, the big picture, we didn't have it until a couple of years ago. So before it was just sort of, I think we called it like outside agency funding or something like that. I can't recall exactly. Yeah, so, uh, so with strategic partners now, uh, the way most of that's handled, uh, seems like it's going well in a lot of ways. My question about has always been for the organizations that are sort of more long, you know, where we anticipate, like, you know, you're working on something that there's public value for, and that it's really not going away, right? It's not going away in three years. And it, and it, it does, you know, unless something changes, probably makes sense for the county to be a long-term part of their, uh, funding base, then we need to kind of create some mechanism to consider those, those longer-term relationships. It's, it's, and maybe it's, and maybe it's, um, just thinking about some of those as, uh, instead of annual grants, maybe we could at least think about like multi-year funding. So there's, there's a little bit more predictability for the organizations rather than just every single year. You only know, you can only plan for, you know, the next twelve months. But not making it like, you know, I mean, I don't think we can make things perpetual or set expectations for things that are, you know, it has to be reviewed, it has to be evaluated, but, but something beyond just the annual funding cycle, I, I would be interested in that for, for some partners that we think of as likely long-term partners.
That's our every time. Really challenging, we do, we have, we do do some multi-year grants. I mean, that could be an interesting way to approach it, is have a multi-year category for,
Strategic partners.
Or some of those types, the museums and such. It doesn't, I mean, for the purposes of this year's budget, that we probably would have missed that opportunity, I think. Because those grant applications have already been submitted.
Maybe, are you saying a three-year grant are really just a three-year contract? Right? Not through the strategic partnerships. You weren't, were you saying it still goes through strategic partnerships or actually just look at it outside of that, but on three-year schedules? So you're still assessing?
I'm open to that. I don't have like a real firm opinion about whether it ought to be with the strategic partners or whether like arts and culture or some of these longer-term institutional things, maybe it should be handled through a separate process. I don't really have an opinion about that.
So my understanding when we revamped the strategic partnership process was that we were specifically looking at grants. And I think at one point, multi-year was considered, may still be considered as part of those conversations that they have. But my understanding was we did not want to get in the business of long-term funding organizations, because that is part of what had been occurring. And not necessarily monitoring what was happening in terms of were they doing what they said they were going to be doing with the grant applications? So my concern though, is if we do move into a contract or we, are we going to have to tweak it to make it fit? A contract for service? And that gives me a bit of pause in terms of finagling things in a, in a way, just so we can support them. Not that those organizations and museums are not worthy, that is not what I'm saying at all. They're all credible. But I just want to make sure that we're really holding true to what we had intended strategic partnership grants to be, which was a brand that was meeting and working towards the goals that we had set forward in the strategic plan was, you know, organization A helping us meet an educated community or a vibrant economy versus funding an organization that we just all really care about. Does that make sense?
Is that, is that, are you, does that, are you suggesting that you think they should be moved out of strategic partners or just like, or?
I just want to be really careful about getting into the business of long-term funding. Particularly anything at this point, that's not necessarily, may not necessarily be moving us towards meeting our strategic goals.
Well, you know. Yeah, I go along with that, but let's back up. I think it's critical for us that we look at really supporting the programs. And even if we do it multi-year, whatever, because we've got to make sure that the money we're giving out is going where it's nonprofits or whoever to support our strategic plan. And I just don't want to see us just giving it out. Sure, it's a good organization, that a lot of them, they've been here. But we've got to make sure that the dollars are going where we want them to go as far as meeting our strategic plan and what we're doing for the community. And that's why I like it by us supporting specific programs. And I have no problem if we're going to go multi-year, but I don't think we should ever go over maybe two or three years out, you know, with any program to keep control of it, to look at, look at. But I really think, you know, the key is if we're going to be successful in our strategic plan, we've got to make sure that we control the funds that we're giving out and that they get where we want them to go. Because sometimes with organizations and with nonprofits, I've been on boards, a lot of them. But if you don't have some strings attached to the money, it's out, it might not always be going to where we wanted to do most to get the biggest bang for our buck.
Well, having always worked in that arena of nonprofits, it's never a great idea for an organization to get complacent in terms of having one particular funder forever and ever as well. Want to make sure that you're diversifying and not counting on one entity to continue funding you as well. And I'm just speaking generally, I'm not speaking on a particular realm of nonprofit organization, just in general.
I mean, I agree with that when it comes to getting complacent, but I think there are some, some groups, organizations that like just realistically, they probably need local government as a long-term partner, right? Like, I mean, thinking about the, over on the city side, like, you know, of course, this is a city facility. So it's a bit different that they directly run it, but you can see how it would be done differently, like the nature center. You know, people love the nature center. And like, if they didn't receive like some subsidy from the city, like it would simply cease to exist. Like the city's not the only funder, but just like, it just like, or the civic center, like never going to break even. There's just certain kind of public or public partnered operations that realistically probably need some kind of local government support. To me, and there's other relationships we have too. You know, I mean, we fund Economic Development Coalition every year and we're going to fund them every year. We fund the Sports Commission every year and we're probably going to fund them every year. So there are certain things that maybe we call it economic development or in other spaces where these are long-term relationships. And probably that's a good thing, even though they definitely need to be evaluated periodically. So anyway, I'm, I bring it up to mind to us too. Especially in the arts and culture space where it feels like we haven't had kind of a, I don't know, as a well-organized kind of policy around the levels of funding in that space, they're kind of developing something. So there's a bit more predictability for, for folks, I think, could be valuable. Any other thoughts on this?
I agree. I think we should look at it.
Yeah, I'm, I'm with that perspective.
I'd love to see your proposal from staff, kind of see what they think of the typical applicants for those grants. What, what's the bucket of, of, of kind of organizations that would fall into this kind of conversation? Because that's maybe the hardest part.
And, and maybe a pullout on the entities, like you mentioned, Economic Development, Sports Commission, just to a refresher on any group like that that is getting this annualized funding, the amount of it, and just being able to look at those two sort of streams of funding and think about how we're grouping different organizations or efforts there.
And the rationale behind why those are funded at all term.
So to recap, you look, you want us to look at the sports, not sports, the Sports Commission and Economic Development, yes, because we do have, we do fund them and we buy that service, but also the museums and stuff, you want us to take a look at what that will look like? If we also fund them on an annual basis, is that through strategic partnership from multi-year or is that through our annual budget application? Which one are you looking for?
I'd welcome some staff perspective on that question. And, and also it would be helpful just to kind of see what kind of numbers we're looking at. You know, understanding that what people apply for strategic partnerships is what they applied for this year. It may be very high, it may be depressed for some reason. You know, I think in the ideal, there would be dialogue with these local institutions around what a long-term relationship might look like. So kind of looking at options from staff and, and learning more about how other communities approach this would be helpful.
I think I lean more towards the strategic partnership for starters to enter the arena of funding in a different way versus jumping right into looking at what kind of services to be purchasing. That seems to me a bit more of a stretch at this point than looking at a grant opportunity for arts and culture.
And then, I know when we had that retreat as well, you mentioned you were looking at potentially within the strategic partnerships, doing something with community centers. So have you made any progress on that?
What we were working on at that time was the assessment on all those centers to get a full plan. That is not completed, that should be also completed in April. Is that the timeline running April?
So we're going to move stuff back past the projects.
Lunch is here as well, commissions on, if you guys, this could be a good stop before we start your next topic.
We want to just grab our food and kind of keep, take a minute to get food and just eat. All right, let's, let's grab some lunch and we'll eat back here and keep going.
And we're, and we're, uh, we're kind of on schedule, right?
Well, I had a schedule.
Okay, very good. Great job, everyone.
I'm actually going to go, Brownie, you could take that. I don't need one.
All right. Well, do you want to, do you want to take some more before we had a schedule we did or double that question started?
You have to leave it, Mark, right?
I do. Yeah, okay, let's keep, let's keep going. That's all right.
In your bag, you have copies of long range, yeah, which we can discuss if you have questions. I'd like to start by addressing the projects included in the fiscal year 23 first pass. So as we move forward with our goals of increasing the number of electric vehicles in our fleet, we need to have charging infrastructure available to power these vehicles. So we're looking at electric vehicle infrastructure. This project will comprise our first efforts to establishing that infrastructure. The Public Safety Training Center requires a generator update, and that will also ensure power in the event the county decides to use this facility as their backup emergency operation center. Directed by the results of the Emergency Medical Services Plan I talked about earlier in operating, this project is intended to build the highest priority EMS base for ambulance deployment.
And where, where will that be located?
We're not sure. So that's the, the plan that, um, moving services is going to consult, contract for is to evaluate where we can best deploy our ambulances and reevaluate where our trucks sit in the county so we can build upon, build upon the trucks that we have and, and reduce our response times and.
One look, is this one property or multiple properties for?
The plan is to outline what that looks like across the county. This particular project is to build whatever comes as the highest priority as a result of that plan.
So it could be a standalone, a new standalone facility, it could be a, a new bay at, to a existing fire station, that sort of thing.
Potentially, yes.
Any of the above. Yeah, let's see that, that plan something fantastic.
Yes, that's in there operating, that's, that's the, that's the sole increase like they have there operating this year. So, uh, that's the plan, come out of that plan, and that's really what we've needed for a long time. We're just putting ambulance where we, where they could, they could go, not necessarily where they should go. As you know, we have recently conducted a comprehensive facility assessment. And as a result, the CIP will have placeholders each year to identify major maintenance and repair of facilities. Projects included this year is renovation and repair project are upbit at 40 McCormick. This is a project to renovate the current general services building for emergency medical services use. A courthouse electrical upgrade, it's the main electrical distribution system in the basement that antiquated and needs to be replaced. South Bunkham Library parking expansion, parking of South Bunkham Library is not sufficient for the number of vehicles the library sees. This would utilize land behind the library to create another parking lot and double the available parking. An upgrade to the 200 college, uh, elevator. And then county garage conversion for solid waste. When the general services building is complete and the services vacates that facility, some minor changes need to be made so that it can be used by solid waste. Also included in the facility assessment was an assessment of our libraries. The board voted to maintain all existing libraries. Following the assessment findings, this project will begin the renovation or repair of library facility requiring the most attention. Recreation Services has requested a master plan to assess our park facilities and map out long range strategy to address maintenance, repair, and improvements needed at those facilities.
It doesn't, just for the existing facility, no sort of just template expansion, but just for the future of what we do.
Yes, yes. We have a lot of deferred maintenance. So on the operating discussion, what general services will be doing a lot of maintenance on our facilities? And then, then recreation is also developing a plan for playground replacement. But this will be, this will be a much more expensive. And solar on schools and public buildings. This request is made for $12 million to accomplish the board resolution of installing solar on all school buildings. He's being recommended $4 million per year for three years and will still meet the resolution goal December 31st, 2025. We've learned that smaller projects of this nature will attract a larger pool of contractors and achieve timely completion as opposed to trying to contract one large project. Any questions about these recommended projects?
And the six, the 690 for library renovation, that's for a variety of projects throughout various libraries.
Well, we're choosing one library to focus on, so that's placeholder for the first one that they have.
Which one, which one?
We're not certain at this point. There are discussions about Swan Noah, but the assessment has graded the facilities based on value and.
Yes, and, and John mentioned the worst library that we have in our system is the Swan and Noah Library. So we are talking to those owners and they have indicated they'd be willing to transfer it or lease it or whatever it is to the county so we can start. But the worst library in our system is Swan and Noah, and the next one was West Asheville, right? The next one is West Asheville, so one of those is where we would at least start.
Have the decisions been made yet around which of these will be like Pago versus debt finance?
We're looking at debt financing for base construction. And the solar. Remaining ones would probably be Pago, but since we will have, since we're going to be transferring, um, transferring fund balance, excess fund balance to the, to the general, to the capital fund, that we would not have to do a Pago transfer as usual. That transfer to pay for Pago projects.
Um, and this is more just out of curiosity, not a recommendation, but just like a, have Candace work this way? I mean theoretically, you could debt finance all of these projects if you want, right? Not saying it's a good idea, but just out of curiosity.
I think some of the maintenance and repair you probably wouldn't, Don, yeah? Can you come up for a second? So typically you would not pay, you would not debt finance repairs? So repair and maintenance is not normally debt financed, right?
I didn't hear what you said, sorry.
So he's asking if he could debt finance all of these projects. I'll tell him typically.
It's no, um, can't do that. The ones that I would look on there would be solar, EMS base, and the, you could potentially do some equipment, generator and stuff like that, but it would depend on what the life of the project will be or how long the equipment will last. You don't want to debt finance something that's only got a life of 10 years if you've got 20 years of debt. So I mean, it's really a money weight based on each individual one.
What can't you debt finance, Peter?
Because maintenance and repair is not considered a capital improvement, it's maintenance of repair.
It's just a capital project.
Between issuing debt for capital, which is a capital project, and maintenance and repair, which is under the capital project's umbrella. So when it comes down to the, the financing of it, you look at those very differently between maintenance and what an actual capital asset is.
If you were doing some major renovations to a building, perhaps that would.
If it extended the life, absolutely, we could, we could fund that.
Thank you, appreciate it.
Just to pause there for a second, I mean, is that something that we do want to dig into is contemplating the two pieces of that, what we might want to debt finance and then how we want to use fund balance? Two related pieces.
So we do have, you do have a capital improvement policy and we do, and we speak to what we do, what we debt and finance in the policy. So generally, we look for expenditures in excess of half a million dollars. And that will have a useful life that will run against, up against the debt. So like we said, we don't want to debts, debt finance something that may, may lapse in five years and still pay.
Like for instance, when we did the sheriff vehicles, we did a five-year financing on that because that's the life of those vehicles. We wouldn't want to do a 20-year financing, we wouldn't want to roll that into a law office issue or something like that. That wouldn't be appropriate. But we definitely evaluate every time we go through every capital project that comes and is, and is suggested to budget. We evaluate that as a team and figure out what makes the most sense. And just because we can debt finance it doesn't necessarily make, mean that's the best decision, you know? If interest rates spike up, it might make more sense for us to use fund balance to pay for some capital and that's.
I think that's where I'd just like us to spend a little time as we move forward is there's, what's its strategic debt finance and then what's the highest best use of fund balance? And as we've seen what's happened with fund balance recently, I think it's, it would be a good time to have a refresher conversation on sort of how we're thinking about fund balance and, and how we want to put that to use. So I, I, as we move through these workshops, that's something I'd like to revisit and hear kind of both staff and commission thoughts on. Maybe the place for us to focus a little bit more is that fund balance question. And, and then hearing obviously technical expertise and perspective on which strategy, which projects might be most strategic to think about debt financing. It just feels like it's been, I don't even know if with this composition of a commission, we've really had a kind of dig, deep dive conversation on fund balance in the way we did, I think, in some years' class. So I, I, I'd like to have that conversation before.
I, I mean, part of it seems like this, I mean, I think that policy that you all just briefly gave it over to you, I mean, it makes sense. Like, I mean, that, that seems to be a good approach. But then part of it does come down to if you were ever going to be like more aggressive at using Pago or maybe trying to put some more on the debt side. I mean, part of it would come down to like, we do have to maintain a certain fund balance, right? But if there are certain things we feel like are really important priorities that we couldn't do because our fund balance is going to start getting, you know, perhaps lower than we're comfortable with, then that might be an argument for maybe making a bit more use of financing rather than Pago, right? Because paying for capital projects just with cash isn't very, you know, does deplete a lot of dollars very quickly. So I don't have a sense at this early stage whether we might end up being in a budget cycle where we feel like, I mean, our revenues are way up, so maybe we're going to, maybe this will be a budget cycle that even with some of the growth, maybe we're going to be fine. But it does seem like one of those levers that could be looked at depending on where we find ourselves, right?
Right, and the fund balance conversation is part of the revenue conversation. And today we're focused on those big drivers, different things you see here that we don't want on the table that will help us to look at the revenues as well. So we can come back and those policies we actually put in place in 20 or 21?
20.
20, yeah. So we actually put a lot of these policies in place so we have some guidance and some, some guard rules that we can cover. How we put this together. So we'll come back and we'll talk about fund balance when we talk about revenues. So April 26th is one of our next meetings, so we can dig into that. Um, so.
I'm happy to be part of that conversation.
And I think by then we'll have, yeah, the art proposals. And we'll just have a much sharper, clearer sense of what's, as we think about this budget year, what's, what might move where? And if there are things that are rising to the top of the list of priorities that we're trying to figure out.
That timing sounds great. So if there's anything that we've talked about today that you absolutely want off the table, kind of let us know that as we move to the next, we will, we will call second pass before we get to the final budget. So these are those conversations that we need to get your input. We have a list of things that we're going to bring back to you, but if there are things on here that you truly disagree with, we, we need to know that now as we build out second pass and then final budget.
Just a question out of curiosity, it's not for this year, it's about this.
Are you looking?
124, the storage facility?
This is a result of the facility assessment and I think Mike Mace or Ronnie Lunsford speaking a little more to the 124 storage.
So a, as they're coming, I would also say right now that we have election storage down on Cox Avenue. And as we move forward, assessing parking lots, and if we can build, that's one place we wanted to move that from. But additionally, we do have storage at Alport, other locations in the county. We actually paid for some storage units and we were thinking that we could build a storage, we could build our own. We could build a storage facility over by the old landfill where we have land that will bring all of those pieces together, you know, all those pieces.
Yeah, that's spot on. Through the facility assessment, you know, the need came to light pretty quickly that the county could use a central storage place besides Alport. Uh, the building's obviously getting older, it needs a lot of repairs and upgrades if we continue to use it. And then there's the question of what should that land even be used for in the future? So that, that's really how that arose. And then, uh, like Ms. Pender said, um, we own the land over there at Old landfill, so that became kind of the location for it. That, that's really the gist of that problem.
But as a reminder, future year projects are placeholders so that we go through a submission process every year and vet those, vet those projects. So Ronnie will put together a very detailed submission for the storage facility with quotes and, and then the capital review team will review that and, and use our criteria to decide how it fits into the overall scheme of our capital. So nothing's written in stone. Again, those are, those are placeholders for future year projects. And sometimes they do get pushed out a year or two if we find that what's on our plate is, uh, might be what we need to be doing, working on right now.
Now, firstly, could they, could they potentially be accelerated? I mean, if, if, you know, if some of the projects we'd like to see develop, you know, start moving on a different timeline, then, uh, then we could potentially move that up too. Right? Using some of these downtown properties for storage, I mean, it is like, there's a better place for you, right?
You just made a good point. You actually have the five-year plan, well, you say five, several years on our list. And it's just a list of projects, but we actually, to John's point, every year we pull these out. And as the staff commute out reevaluating every single project with general services and look at capacity and funding. So you have that material.
Happy to feel there are more questions about capital projects.
Ronnie, the Public Safety Training Center, is that AV tech facility in Woodburn?
Yes. Public County Facility.
Okay. And so the plan there is to add a diesel generator to some part of the building? So that it could be in a state of emergency use as a backup nine-one-one center?
Could be. As you recall, when we did the consolidation with Asheville to do a nine-one-one center, our backup facility right now is Asheville. And when we bring those two together, we would not have the capacity to size. So we do have to find another location for a backup nine-one-one. And we're looking at existing county facilities now to see if we can house that there. That backup facility is required by law. So we, we need to, we need to figure out how many seats it's needed because they have not given us that answer yet. So once we have that answer, then we'll be looking to construct.
So that generator might go to a different.
Generators still need that facility. So, but, but it becomes more important to me that to maintain power. We put the backup center there or an emergency operations center there. So so for the pandemic, we use the basement of Cox. Right. Emergency operations center. And, and in another situation that doesn't send everybody out the offices, that space isn't regularly available. So we have to look at another location for emergency operations.
Wondering about some of these capital projects that are talked about in the community that are not county, county-owned properties, like thinking about like, we probably all read the paper about like McFermuth Field price tag that they're saying, you know, set of improvements that need to be made to keep it, keep it, keep it here to meet these new baseball regulations or whatever. So there are others too. So, um, are those projects at the staff, I mean, you know, there's, you know, these are city, some of these are city facilities. A lot of these are probably projects that'll apply to TDA for funding, for product development funding. They definitely are used by visitors. But obviously many of those folks would want the county to consider being there. So where do, where do we look at those types of projects and whether we play a role or don't play a role?
So as they get fleshed out, then they'll bring that back. We haven't seen yet proposals on those. We've heard conversations. But then we'll come back to the board and the board will have to decide fund balance is how you will fund those because since we don't own them, it would not be debt financed. So those will be conversations that y'all would decide if you want to fund or play any part, or Cormick Field, the golf course, or Memorial Stadium, I believe, but there are three that we've heard as well as Har, Thomas School. The, the four. They're all county, city-owned property. So we could help fund that capital project with the city. But they have not made a full ask of us yet. Not have they have schematics and design and what that cost is really going to look like. That will be a request that will come to you guys as a regular meeting. Then you could appropriate fund balance should you choose to go there.
At this point, do you have a kind of an expectation that some of those might get presented to the county during this budget cycle or is this more likely in future budget cycles?
I think it's more likely in the future. We had heard, um, tourist field, is that Cormick? That, we have heard that that was on a fast trajectory because of the major league baseball's timeline to get it done by twenty twenty-five. But we haven't heard anything else. They have not yet approached TDA or have the, so we don't know what the ask is. We've told them that we love to be the last money in, so they need to put some of their own money in and they come to us as the last money, but we haven't heard anything yet. What that need is.
Sidewalks, because I didn't think of us typically doing sidewalks, but I've seen sidewalks.
There, there is a placeholder twenty-five thousand a year in case they're small.
Yeah, that's correct. We do, uh, additional planning goes to Nate's office. They then decide whether we're going to put in the sidewalks or not. Then it falls under me's general services to take care of those sidewalks and we go back, we go out annually and do an assessment on if they need any repairs or things like that.
So.
Lester, there's a section out there, a section in West Asheville.
So they're not sidewalks as you would think along roadways as a typical, but they're small parts of the county that we would fill in gaps. I think he said there's some in Lester and there's some out in West Asheville that will become county property. So if that's the case, we maintain them.
So we don't have been in the past grant funded in order to make, and the grants have long since gone. So, you know, to maintain tho, those that the county helped sponsor, we, we would maintain those. We do not have a lot of sidewalks that we work on in the county. And those within municipal is would be, those municipal is would be their responsibility.
Or at least within NCDOT right of way? Or is it that?
Um, I, I wish Nate was here to explain that more in detail because I don't know how they, they do that when they go through the planning section. But most of them are in the right of way areas. But we end up taking the annual maintenance and looking at those.
Yeah, let's learn more about that one.
Do the municipalities like Asheville maintain all of the sidewalks on all streets within Asheville or only the ones that are owned by the city as opposed to the state streets? Just to, so the DOT does maintain the ones on the state highway too?
We will follow up to make sure as well on sidewalks.
And on like complete streets projects, there is like a local match requirement in some cases, right? Like an eighty-twenty match. So if those situations come up, was that where some of these funds would be applied to or would we have to kind of appropriate some more money as those sort of situations come up from time to time?
We don't know that answer.
Don't get a lot of those over the next decade.
Yeah, I would, I would, I mean, I would just, you know, it's been brought up. I mean, to me, it's an area where I feel like we with the, with the city limits essentially fixed, you know, with annexation not happening with growth of municipal boundaries not happening as new development happens. I mean, most cities around the state, when new development happens and they connect into the city's water system, that they're required to do in the city, but that doesn't happen here because of state legislation. So, you know, we see all this urbanization happening around the edges of the municipalities. It's, you know, so it's becoming urbanized. But you don't have that municipal entity there to maintain sidewalks. And so uh, I feel like it's this role that like, I mean, I don't, I think the county to some degree has to step into or at least figure out a plan that somebody steps into. So sidewalks are built where they're needed and, and maintain out in those areas outside the municipal boundaries. So, I mean, I hope that's the kind of thing we're looking at through the comp plan to think about, you know, uh, beyond just sort of, I mean, the complete streets are great with DOT, upgrading a highway, that's a great time to put in a sidewalk. Of course, that's the best time to do it. But I just feel like it's going to be a, a role that we haven't traditionally played, that we're going to need to operate in increasingly going forward. Just because the need is there, no one else can do it, I don't think. All right, just, want to keep going?
We're going to hear from Eric right now on our IT directive.
Well, I'm a spirit today. This is the third year now we've done ITGC in this process and I think we've refined it pretty well. Um, here presents you today our recommended projects. How we got here, we originally had forty-one, uh, projects that were submitted, uh, back in September to our ITGC process. Some are the capital, there's a committee that reviews all these projects. Uh, we selected twenty-one this year to move forward to what we call our full assessment and evaluations. There's twenty of those that got dropped off. This is as our process has matured over the last few years. Some of those projects went to operating expansion. There were security cameras, let's say, right? No technology, no business processes. It truly wasn't expansion. So these twenty represents kind of new things in our organization, uh, new programs, new initiatives, et cetera. Of those twenty, um, similar to what John talked about, there's a multi-year workbook in, in your sheets. You can look at, uh, kind of that multi-year effect. Similar to capital, every year they're going to get resubmitted, reprioritized, et cetera. So that's just kind of a placeholder. But nevertheless, uh, we're recommending seven projects, uh, for FY twenty-three. It's about six hundred fifty-eight thousand dollars. First project on this list is, uh, our food and lodging, uh, inspection system is end of life. It's been bought over several times, uh, through various vendors. Latest acquisitions from Tyler Technologies. They're not moving forward with our products. We have to get off of it in the next year or so. The next one is continuity of operation, a system and services. I've presented this before to y'all, um, with ARPA funding. This is about when disaster hits, how do we continue our, our, our services? Everything from cyber security attacks to pandemics. Uh, this is a cloud hosted, uh, system that we will, uh, and there's services to help us understand, you know, what's essential. You know, various types of, of disasters, how do we continue having this as usual? Uh, the rec services management software, uh, this is kind of a placeholder for our new rec services director. We don't have, uh, any rec services management software right now. Uh, the previous director, uh, predominantly used maybe not authorized tools. And this is a opportunity to get them into our environment and our skill. So we're looking forward to that. Uh, the vehicle and fleet management software, again, it's the end of life software. It's about twenty years old. One of those green screen kind of softwares, uh, with the, the big emphasis on fleet management. We're also, as you know, we're building a new garage facility. Uh, so this is all time for that to manage our fleet, uh, maintenance schedules, things like that. Next one is a, uh, call street media rooms. The downstairs room, first floor room. This is uh, our AV equipment in there is old, we'll all say, and finicky. Uh, this is, we'll put it into basically a backup board of commissioners chambers. The new world of hybrid meetings have been challenging at times. Uh, all a person is super easy, all hype, all remote's easy. Hybrid has been a bit of a challenge. Uh, this, uh, downstairs room would be used for other boards, uh, media, uh, press conferences, just general, you know, media events that need to happen. Uh, so that was AV equipment for that room. The workday learning module is a, uh, learning management system. We invested a lot in training, policy attestation over the last couple of years. This is a, we'll be putting our ERP system tied into all of our HR data to manage professional development, training, compliance, um, and policy at the test station as well. And the last one is a debt lease, um, piece of software that manages all of our debt. I heard recently a hundred fifty million dollars in debt that we have. That's not really, all states manage on spreadsheets today, which is, uh, this puts into a solid system of, uh, accountability and compliance for our budgetary debt.
Rec services management, is that kind of like, uh, making reservations for a field or that sort of thing?
Yeah, this maintenance, uh, part, part of that, uh, there's internal kind of work like maintenance and things, but external public basis stuff like rent a field, rent a paddle boat, right?
Absolutely said that.
So far it's just brownie, we're just.
That was a random joke.
Commissioners, you were, we call that when we talk with FEMA, the COOP, all the hunting knife operations was something that we were dinged on that we don't have. So this is our attempt to get that in place. I think you would have heard throughout this conversation about going back to foundation and getting some of our foundational staffing as well as equipment. What we need to start building that for Bunker County. So, and these pieces are things that, to, um, Eric's point, we haven't had a right management software and we are managing our debt and our leases on spreadsheet. So there are things and they're small dollars. But trying to get our IT systems in today's world as well as our staff in that way, so.
Since we have this time with you, could you give us like a two-minute kind of primer on where we're headed with the continuity of services and also just kind of given the, you know, rising threats around cyber attacks and such sort of? Do you feel like this is what you need? Do you, are there additional things that we should be thinking about looking at?
Yes. And we're going to talk about that later today, actually, a little bit, uh, at our preview, uh, group board agenda meeting. Uh, there are some cybersecurity tools specifically that we are requesting through a budget amendment around twenty-four seven threat detection and monitoring thereof. We have, we create logs all the time of activity of logging into systems, system server usage, things like that. Uh, one of the big things that this, uh, service provider that we'll look for, it's outsourced, will capture all of our logs, do artificial intelligence and twenty-four seven threat detection around that. And some other tools as well around, uh, say data breach monitoring. There's the dark web you may have heard of, right? So this would go actively monitor for breaches in our data. We've had some trial, um, with the software. And we have found some of our data out there and so, uh, that's an important concept. So to answer your question about continuity of operations in a little bit, how that looks. So we would be engaging with consultant. This would be an absolute enterprise effort. Every department, uh, needs to be involved. We're going to evaluate all of our services that we do across the county. What is considered essential. I think we know what some of those things are right off the bat, of course. But then the consultant will walk us through, given various types of events, uh, and some of these events can overlap. If there's a fire in the building or the building is just not accessible for whatever reason, you know, what does that mean for tax collections? What does that mean on the first week of the year for tax collections, even that kind of granularity? So long story short, we would come, you know, with consultants, create all, define all of our services, define either temporal fluctuations and when those services are critical, like tax collections. Uh, and then, uh, we work towards putting response plans in a database that's accessible. At that point, we have tabletop exercises, say, once or twice a year, we simulate an event, like a cybersecurity attack. No one can, um, access any systems. How do we process a register of deeds? You know, uh, transfer? How do we, uh, collect tax payment if our systems are down, those types of things?
So we'll see you Tuesday?
Yes.
I think it's later today.
But they're not there.
Next Tuesday we'll see this.
For cybersecurity, that budget amendment.
Exactly, yeah.
So after Eric, we have Phil Park in here to discuss recommendations for the homeowner grant program if you would.
Need to speak about the homeowner grant, uh, and just kind of recap. Uh, we learned a lot coming last year, but it's a little bit of a recap. Past year, uh, we took almost two thousand applications. We approved low over twelve hundred of that. Want to talk about some revisions that we, uh, propose for the homeowner grant for coming year. Commissioners choose to run this grant again. First one is liquid resources of less than five thousand dollars. You know, there's a couple reasons for that. Want to kind of match programs that we already run to some extent. Want to make sure, uh, that we're serving the population that I think commissioners intended for us to serve. I've got a chart that'll give you a little background about this. This will show you the numbers, uh, of thugs who fall into those categories. We, uh, we didn't include liquid resources. Sorry, the numbers are a little small. The, uh, we did not use liquid resources as a, as a eligibility criteria this year. But we did ask the question. And, uh, we had about, uh, two hundred and forty so folks didn't answer that we approved this. And then we had a thousand or so that did answer and so we had a little bit over five hundred and four that we approved that were, uh, below, uh, five thousand dollar liquid. We looked at it at ten thousand dollars. That number was much higher. It was six hundred and something. Folks that were below that ten thousand dollar limit. So, uh, so our, and liquid resources would be those things that are converted within, into cash within a quick period, five days. Cash on hand, checking account, something. Cash on hand, checking account, something that you grab fairly easily would be like stocks and bonds. The other one would make sure that, we did say that people who are receiving a tax exemption were not eligible. But we had a number of people that were receiving tax exemptions that are not outlined in those tax exemptions, like tax deferments, timber deferments, those kinds of things. We would like to just really say that if you receive some kind of tax exemption, then you're not eligible in this program, irregardless of what kind of deferment or exemption that is.
So if you have property and it's an agricultural assessment value, then you wouldn't be eligible.
Correct. Some, some of those doesn't necessarily mean your taxes go away. When it's a deferment, it's made as long as you own the property.
Not just, is it present use valuation just for land? It's not for actual homes, is it?
Correct.
But, but your property tax bill includes both the land and all.
Correct, they, the deferred property taxes on the land.
The house is still taxed at its full market value.
The home is still taxed at its full value, correct.
And we, we somewhat make that recommendation. It's really hard to sort through when you start talking about deferments versus what, what's being taxed actually.
But there's another type of deferment, not just the present use. These are actually the home builders deferment. So if a builder is building a home or somebody owns a house, they can defer that payment on that home.
During construction. That's pretty small number.
That could do that.
The other one there is owning multiple properties. And here's what we would, what we would say with that, because there could be lots of different configurations that, if you own multiple properties that are not contiguous and they have structures on them. Because we actually had quite a few folks that we approved that own multiple properties with structures or homes on them. And things will probably rental problems. They, we approved them for their residence, but so we, you know, we write the policy to that, that kind of exam.
You all looking into this.
Yeah.
And really kind of getting after the, the finer points with it.
The next piece is we would like to begin taking applications on July first and end on September thirtieth. And there's some reasoning behind that. We ran this year into late November, early December. People who had mortgages, escrow, or a pay taxes, we want to move it up so that we can finish before those, those people have their escrowing, before those, that starts to happen. We want to look at, make sure that we're able to approve people who own mobile homes that may not be on a property of their own. You know, wouldn't necessarily be talking about a mobile home. But we had quite a few people had mobile homes that may be on the property of their parents or something like that. But we, we cannot help those folks because the tax on that mobile home is their personal property, not real property tax. We would like to be able to help those folks.
Can you explain that some more? So, right, if, if you own the mobile home and it's on your own property, then clearly you were able to help them anyway, right? And, and that way is it taxed at that regular rate? I was thinking if you owned a mobile home and it wasn't on, and you didn't own the land it's sitting on, and you're taxed at the, what did you call that, like almost like a vehicle?
Right.
Right? At that rate, that is.
It is the same rate.
It is the same rate. Okay, thank you.
It's just that it's not real property and our, our program said real.
So it, so it is the same rate, tax rate on whatever the value of that property is. Thank you for clarification.
And that's the, the exact example we're talking about, Commissioner Wells, is that person who owned that mobile home. They just didn't own the property. Like I said, I think it was their parents' property. We had numerous ones of folks that we weren't able to help because at that point it was just personal property. And then we want to make sure that, especially if questionable, the applicants provide verification of income and resource. We took client statement this past year. We would like to make sure that, that they provide that, some of that information we may have already. The reserve stuff we would not have, but we want to make sure that, especially if questionable, that they provide that. And that's part of the reason I'm moving the program up a little bit too. Talk about that. And just back to Chairman humans question, I think the last time I represented the question about the cost of running this program. As you can see, now weeks, then three hundred and seventy-eight thousand of Bunker County dollars, total four seventy-nine. And this is a, a low cost, but if you look right now, it's costs us low over two hundred and seven thousand dollars to run the program.
There was staff time.
Staff, and that's not actually all staff down. That's probably a little bit of a low number. I mean, we have supervisor stuff's really hard to track, the amount of time they invest in that, those things, so.
So Commissioners, I apologize, I'm going to have to walk up for the Zoom calls in a start minute. But I really appreciate as well the staff looking at this and digging into this, thinking about it. And I'm glad to see this information too, although the numbers are, you know, I mean, this was my, this was my biggest concern is that this is like, you know, we'd love to figure out ways to make the property tax system a little bit less of a burden for those who are, you know, for whom it is the biggest challenge. But that's a big, I mean, that's a big burn rate on admin for the actual public benefit that we're able to provide for it. So I just, I would like to, I mean, as we go forward, I definitely want to kind of keep thinking about this and think about, are there ways? I mean, would there be ways to make it less administratively challenging or other ways to amend it? Because I, I, I would really love to see it continue going, but it would be, to me, it'd be hard to justify the public, like that much cost to the taxpayers when the goal here is to help taxpayers, right? So, so thank you all for digging into this and we can learn what we can do in so far and think about it in forming our future work. Commissioner Edwards, thank you for facilitating, but I do need to step down myself to take a Zoom call.
Philip, I'm assuming if the policy revisions were considered of verifying income and reserve, that that number on county administrative costs is going to increase. Do you have any idea what that could potentially look like?
Depends on how well that we put something in place to do applications electronically. And screen those applications. We also think that with some of the policy changes, we have less people who would be eligible. So he may end up taking less applications if you do a good job upfront screen. So, yeah, I, whether it go up or down, it's hard to say.
I definitely appreciate the effort put into this and this information because clearly we want to make sure that we're getting it to the folks that are in need and who need it rather than those who are just know that it's available and take advantage of the situation. I think this is really good data to help us understand that. I'm, I'm supportive of continuing to work at it. I think Commissioner Newman had a, a valid point about us, you know, looking at the staffing, but I think we should continue to look at the program. We've certainly heard from folks that it helps. And, and I'm really glad that you were able to look at the, address those that we did not help last time with the mobile homes who were in need. So thanks for working at that as well.
Your point would be not to be punitive, but really to help the folks that I think that this program.
Well, in a number of years ago, I mean, we made our text amendment for manufactured housing to allow people more access to, to those homes. So if we're not assisting those living in manufactured housing, we're almost going against what we had even attempted to do in making them more accessible for people in terms of affordable housing.
Is the consensus of the board to keep it in the first pass as we go forward?
Yeah.
That is our last prepared slide, but I do want to make sure if there was anything that we presented today, personnel, capital projects, or homeowners or IT projects that you wanted us to consider removing or not. I'd like to get that guidance. If you're all good, then we're good.
There's one thing you mentioned that I'd love to hear more from, and maybe, maybe I need to wait until April for the schools. You mentioned that their, their due utility rates are going up. I'd love to hear more about why and how.
They do, well, I believe the state budget allowed due to. So.
Right.
That will trickle down.
Giving notice that their rates are going to increase. And we're not sure, we can, they've quoted us as going up by thirteen percent. That's the highest number. Is that out?
When does the solar kick in?
Well, we're now in the process of installing those. I'm not sure how many schools already have solar on them, so we can get an update to you. But they have to be installed and we just started installation this last year. I do want to clarify, you said April, but schools will come to you in May.
Okay.
Jeremiah did say that we wouldn't see any from schools this year, but more likely next year.
I believe your question was things to take out.
If there's anything that gave you heartburn coming over today.
Thank you very much for your participation today.
Thanks to the staff, all of you all for the incredible information. Really appreciate your hard work.
And especially thanks for getting it to us in advance. We had it over the weekend.
Yes.
Our intent was to get it out to you at noon on Friday, so we got it Saturday. So we're into, we're into closer to Friday.
That was progress.
Yeah.
That's great, yeah.
Yeah.
And then we'll see you on April, well, Tuesday night for my board meeting. But our next budget work session is April twenty-sixth. And at that meeting, our goal, dig into revenues. You can understand those revenue service growth as well as fees. We, we have a whole list of fees that we're looking to change or upgrade or increase. So we're going to our B schedule as well. And then.
Also, the multi-year outlook.
Yep, and then we'll try to respond to some of the questions that we heard raised today as well.
Thanks, everyone. Thank you.
I wrote it's Monday, January sixth.
On the Monday?
Tuesday, okay.
We already have that date.
Yeah, you should already have that on your calendar.
Yeah.